Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November third twenty twenty five meeting. Uh let's start off with the roll call.
All right, uh Joe Robinson is here, but he said he would be Robert Spandler.
Here.
John Kirchner.
Here.
Josh first.
Here.
Gary Lanker.
Here.
Brian Hommeroy. Karen Morgan. Chris Dietz.
Yes, here.
And Mary Gieske.
Here.
And Commissioner Hartwig.
Anyone we missed? Looks like we got everyone. Right in front of you or in your email, you've received the minutes of the October sixth meeting. We have a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
By Mary, who was the second?
Josh.
Thank you, Josh. All in favor, say aye.
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 I saw it. Treasurers report. We have looks like uh two thousand five hundred eighty nine dollars and thirty seven cents. Spenditures, uh so we have a motion for the treasurer's report. So move. By Gary, you have a second?
First or second?
John, thank you, John. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nace, hearing none motion carries. Thank you. Reports. Any officers have any reports? I have none.
None, none.
Okay, moving on. Communications and staff reports.
None.
None at this time, alrighty. The program progress report.
I'll take that. Um it's a pretty busy month, actually, October. We had a number of uh of conferences, very beginning of the month, there was the Penn dot planning partners conference, our staff uh attended and actually did three different presentations there, one on some kind of interactive mapping dashboards we developed, we also presented some kind of basic planning education as well as uh one of our regional active transportation plan that we adopted last past April. Um some other highlights, we have our our Nevie community charging programs, that's part of the the federal uh electric vehicle infrastructure program. That's what Ne- Ne- Nevie's National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program, so uh there's been a couple rounds and Penn dot's already done that have focused on kind of the big highways, the interstate quarters to enable kind of long distance travel. This community charging program is then to uh kind of look at where we should invest outside of those big quarters, so like, you know, when it sounds like community based charging, not necessarily corridor based. So uh we have, we developed some web tools, a couple maps, and then we're asking for uh for input uh through a survey and and an interactive mapping kind of application that allows you to drop points where you'd like to see EV charging. Uh and then um eventually that will be kind of, the outreach results will be combined with some analysis, and that'll go before Hatz in the spring that we have to submit what what they 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 want priority communities, so kind of geographically where we would want uh where we see as priorities for additional charging infrastructure as well as what they call use cases, which are kind of like land uses and type, so it's couple different, you know, grocery stores, convenience stores, large commercial centers, dense downtowns where people can't park on their own land, like, you know, on their own driveways, those types of things, so we'll be going through that exercise kind of through this winter into the spring. Um to that, that uh that survey is available on our website, and we'd appreciate any any assistance anybody can give us in helping to get the word out, because the the more responses we get from places that you might represent, the better that's going to look when we do our our community rankings, so um yeah.
Is that both like public and private partnerships, I mean to like?
I mean, it'll basically, it'll it'll be operated very similarly to the last round, where it's basically private companies saying, I wanna install I wanna install public or EV charging.
Like like Sheets Corporation or something like, okay.
So, but then municipalities could also have publicly available, like it it needs to be it needs to be publicly available, not
Okay.
private, but but it it can be.
So if you have a municipal parking lot in order.
That's it, that's one of the use cases where it is kind of subject to the prioritization, yep. Uh we've also kicked off uh what's called the Human Service Transportation Plan. Uh that looks at kind of the mobility needs and barriers for uh the elderly and disabled in our region. That is a uh of of federally mandated plan that Hatz is an MPO and Tri County has a staff done. Uh last one was done in twenty fifteen. So we just kicked this one off again, there's a survey, that's kind of a targeted survey, we haven't released it yet. That'll be specifically sent to it, it'll be open to the public, but it's really meant for seniors, the disabled, people with kind of specialized uh transportation needs. Uh one down through, have you, the only other, uh much, two other things. Um we did formally adopt and then and then submit our regional transportation plan, so that was a big deal for us, our our long range transportation plan has been formally submitted to Penn dot F D A and F H W A for approval, we expect that uh later in December. Uh and then we're doing tip development right now for, you know, for the for this year's tip update. We did have a a a work session with our with our MPO members in October, we kind of walked through everything. Think the the takeaway of that was, we don't have a lot of money to work with right now, and given that the federal infrastructure funding legislation uh lapses the day this tip takes effect, we're not going to be especially aggressive, we're just, at this point, we're just kind of guessing as to the funding levels we're gonna have, and kind of assuming they're gonna stay the same, but that may or may not be true, it's all subject to whatever happens in Washington, uh you know, next late summer into the fall, so we we want now until we know of of what what kind of comes out of that process. Um Gary, did you have anything for, you know, I'll also mention the the planning conference, the P P A planning conference was in Harris for a lot of great sessions. Bunch on affordable housing, I think I went to two different affordable housing, or even kind of white removal type kind of housing oriented sessions, some stormwater stuff, some transportation stuff, so.
We the, one of the ones was about the energy consumption as associates with the the data centers, the head of the P U C was there. Also the president of the regional transmission lines that were our district was there, so that was pretty good. Uh but four hundred fifty planners, uh a lot of them from the Philadelphia, because the it's easy to get here, right? So uh we had a very, I think, uh very well attended, very well represented by track community.
Yep.
And the commissioners were so generous to provide a lot of support, planning, and they they funded a number of uh activities in terms of the receptions and everything.
Yeah, I know, I know Commissioner Priest was at the the Sunday night.
Yeah, and he spoke, and that was, it was.
Very appreciated.
Yeah, very nice.
We have four hundred and fiftieth thing.
I didn't hear that number, but it was, that room was full, absolutely.
The whole Hilton was. Although the next day, the uh uh breast cancer awareness people were there, and there were a lot of people there for the but uh but uh for planning in in central, south central Pennsylvania, it was a very well attended, got to show up a lot. With Karen gave a a number of tours downtown of Capitol, bike share was highly promoted, so um and I think everybody generally, you know, the the overall view of the conference was uh was positive.
Yeah.
Okay, is that everything here?
Yeah.
Okay, we have the 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 local planning assistant work there, uh thirty hours out there in the meetings around the county. Glad to see that the out there helping them uh a lot of uh, see a lot of long meetings there, I'm sure they're not all one night, but.
No, a- a- actually, they were.
Were they?
Yeah.
Yes, I see there South Hanover Township, five hours.
Uh yes, uh there was a fair amount of discussion on data centers in uh South Hanover, as they're trying to navigate what's going on, and and our back sheet was pretty much highlighted with Karen and that there. Uh same thing that uh, so Territorial Township was four hours, and I was there, it was about uh like, it was about data centers as well, so that was a long discussion, so.
Um it's the topic of the day.
And and even if you go out to Washington Township, Karen Ford, so was another long night meeting with the number of committees up there about that, so everybody's asked how, what they possibly could do, so that's the new exciting going on.
And and from what I read in the papers and all that, everyone wants to write stuff so they can't, I mean, so they don't come through municipalities, right, I mean.
I I think, I think as with every issue, there's two topics, the one is the the recognize we need these uh things uh because of tech everything that were happening, and uh but at what, where and how how do you best fit it in? Uh you know, the this, everything is being hard to locate somewhere. But the energy draw is quite large. And the pool of these things takes a lot of water. So uh that's also a strain on facilities. Uh there is the positives that A, you know, once you get it in there, they do not create a lot of traffic, uh they do not generate a lot of uh outside needs uh in terms of uh transportation and or other type of traditional development land use costs. Uh and and but and then also, the value of them is providing quite a bit of tax revenue to to locations, so. So there's a, there's a lot of a lot of excitement going on, so.
Yeah, we just uh uh lost a community up in northeast Pennsylvania that's sold out, that's gonna close a manufactured housing community with over a hundred sites uh for uh the purpose of a data center going in. So we have concerns because we're gonna be targeted, because we have large land masses that could be utilized, you know, kind of the same, we went through the same thing with box stores, you know, looking for a large land mass to do something with.
Yeah, and and I think that's kind of where we all stand in terms of what's the best use of our land, uh you know, the a lot of the things that are happening elsewhere is they're taking agricultural land again, and uh you know, there's the dynamic of losing the large lots for that are agricultural uh base, uh you know, it's uh, it it's, you know, and we're gonna be talking a little bit about housing too, and the, you know, uh what is good for one thing is good for many, and that's right now the highest bidder is is data center, so.
Right.
Alrighty. Committees, I don't think there are any committees out there right now, so some new born, old business subdivision land development. Millersburg Borough.
Okay, um if you were at last month's meeting, you're part of the the review, what was going on? Uh there is a land development application that is up in Millersburg uh and Upper Paxton Township. Upper Paxton is uh has its own review uh procedures, uh so they are looking at this land development or this this subdivision uh on their own, and we're, we provided their our review comments, but with the uh uh the land development or with the subdivision in Millersburg portion, that is a county approval. Uh to, Andrew, if you wanna kind of bring that plan up just very quickly enough, I'll go over it just to remind everybody. Nope, that's it, either one, either either show more information, it'll get us to say, but the uh the Polk Foundation is looking to subdivide a piece of property that contains a medical facility. It's located off uh a a private public slash street, uh and it's uh which crosses between uh Millersburg and Upper Paxton Township. You see, it's coming off on Medical Road there, and it's uh Evelyn Drive is that the public private slash tree street. Uh and that's where a lot of this discussion was on subdividing this piece of property off. The uh foundation appears this gonna be selling that piece to whoever the applicant is or owner is, that's that's our, uh that's my assumption, I think that's what I think. But the uh the main concern that we all had whenever we were doing this with everybody was that road. Typically, whenever you do a subdivision, uh pretty much our regulations and everybody's regulation is that you gotta have a public access and you have a private or public street, or it can be private, but this was all done way back whenever the medical facility was built and put in, and this road was put in, and it was shown as a public road, but privately maintained. So there was no real record of it until the Polk Foundation came through with giving some information about how the road is actually going, how it has been maintained, and how it's continued to be maintained. Uh my understanding is that uh what everybody according to the agreement is, is Upper Paxton goes back and plows it, but and they maintain uh like potholes and everything up into the uh line, but then the owner of the land is responsible for doing everything else in terms of fixing them or such. It is a noncompliant road, it's, I think, only eighteen feet in width, it's which is less than a normal driveway even, but it it functions primarily as a driveway for that for that property. So that was the main thing to determine what, how to handle this application with the assurances that whenever you do a subdivision, you create a new lot, that every facility is there. So I think in in um working through with Tanner and with the Borough and Upper Paxton, I think we have the necessary assurances that we know who owns it and who is going to be maintaining it, and we wanted to have that reported onto the plan to make sure that that uh goes on throughout the time period. The other main thing was with any new subdivision, of course, you gotta put in sidewalks. So um you know, there's, this is a piece that's in a rural section, I mean, a kind of undeveloped section, however, you know, there is some development out there, it is a medical facility. The question is, is there intent of putting in sidewalks, and if there is, you know, it doesn't make sense to put them in now versus putting them in later or such and everything else. One of the things was is uh that roadway is only eighteen feet, the right of way, however, is fifty feet. So if anybody's ever gonna be putting in some sidewalks, it's actually assumed if they can put them inside the uh uh that right of way, so Tanner working with all the different parties, Millersburg and the Upper Pax, and everyone seems to be fine with that, however, we wanted to have that noted in on the plan, so. The uh, that's pretty much the summary of it, I don't know if there's any questions, I don't, Chris, you're uh want to speak to it somewhat, if you're familiar with it, or you know, if we can, we can go and give just our general recommendation for approval uh with conditions.
I think the the conditions that you have here in the letter um are are pretty good. About uh maintaining the possibility for future sidewalks is uh is good, and um yeah, the the easements uh for the utilities as well.
Unrelated to this action, you have what year this property was built, what year this building was built, just curious if you
Uh.
It's been, it's been a while.
This is late eighties, I think. Does that sound right, Chris?
I don't know, I wasn't in the area at that time.
Uh. Can you zoom in on any uh some notes on there?
I don't.
No, I don't know, I mean, I I I knew it's uh where the road is maybe.
So the maintenance agreement is from nineteen ninety one.
Uh that's, that's when it was done. Yeah.
June nineteen ninety one.
There you go.
Thank you.
Late eighties, early nineties, yeah, my age, that's pretty close. So so in essence, our recommendation is for granting of one waiver, which is preliminary plan approval, and then uh having a few uh conditions, just briefly. Uh there are easements that are not shown across the one lot, the parcel below. Uh we recommend, we we believe that should be shown. Uh and they have it, they just need to show it. A note on the Evelyn Drive is a nonconforming street, and it's which other, it would not be permitted under this current ordinance, which is uh because it's a dead end street, uh so there, we're going to consider that existing nonconforming. Uh the uh put the note on the plan indicating that their deed of dedication for the public road is there, and who's going to be maintaining it uh between uh property owner in Millersburg and Upper Pax, and as mentioned, that agreement, as Chris said, it was in ninety one. Uh in lieu of the sidewalks, uh place a note on the plan that there will be a pedestrian easement within that right of way, that fifty foot easement, so in case uh there is to be uh anytime a sidewalk. Uh then also note the dates of the waivers, uh note the date of the Upper Pax and uh approval of the plan as well, so. Other than that, uh that's what we're suggesting, and if they uh uh again, I think everyone's in agreement that this this is the example.
Okay, we have to take action on that, uh do I have a motion for the staff recommendations? So, Joe. Thank you, Gary, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none motion carries, thank you. Right here, new business subdivision land development. Uh in front of us, there are eleven plans for this month. Um guys, was there anything that um different down the ordinary? And this includes just active.
Uh it's it's separate, what's, if if there's the Upper Pax something is in there, it's only because the uh uh I think we approved our notes. Yeah, I think we approved the last time, uh the notes on the Upper Pax, so these are all new, different plans than what we just have. Are you sure that's? Pakistan, it's not.
Their goals and more their foundation.
Is that what, same people?
Oh. So it is.
Oh, well then that's the Upper Pax portion, I got you.
Okay.
Because we did review it as a separate application on there and for their ordinances.
Um if no one has any questions of those eleven plans, uh do I have a motion to uh accept the staff comments for those eleven plans, send that along?
So move.
Mary Gieske will second.
Who who made the motion?
Josh.
Josh, oh, thank you, Josh. And Mary, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, all eleven plans. Thank you. Comprehensive plans, West Hanover Township.
Uh yes, uh West Hanover last year or so have been working towards a comprehensive plan. Um a copy of the uh plan was available for you to review if you wanted to, it was in the last page of our handout that Link was providing. Uh our person, uh Rebecca Wine Shop, I think you say.
Swing Shop.
Wine Shop. Wind Shop. Uh so these Pennsylvania does. I know Slavinsky Galonski, my Western behavior.
You know, yins and weeds, right?
Yeah, that's right. So uh uh she was part of the review team. Um and uh we think it was a very well done plan, uh we have uh our recommendation is that it be adopted. Um we also found that consistent with our goals, uh there was nothing outstanding that was uh uh against what we are seeking to do as a county. Uh there are some general comments, and those were contained in the letter, but they were mainly uh just some cleanup items in terms of additional items, maybe some things to include in terms of making a little bit clearer of things. Otherwise, we're recommending uh a supportive plan.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the West Hanover cop plan.
Motion, this is Chris.
Thank you, Chris, so I have a second?
First or second?
Thank you, John. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you. We have a five thirty seven plan in front of us for Lower Swetar Township.
Yes, uh Lower Swetara uh has been ongoing as well, uh doing uh reviewing of their needs for particularly uh some areas of uh lacking of public sewer and also some uh development of a new uh on lot disposal system ordinance. Uh we necessarily won't talk a little bit about all the details of it from an engineering or cost or such, because that is a little bit beyond our our scope, however, of course, we're always supportive of a having municipalities look at their their work in terms of improving facilities, taking care of uh failing systems and uh moving forward in terms of environmental and and the developments uh measure. Uh whether it's cost effective or whether it's engineering sound, we're not gonna necessarily weigh in on those technical details, but as a a general type of thing in terms of planning and uh overall needs, yes, we we agree, and therefore we're recommending that uh they adopt their five thirty seven plan.
Hey, you have a motion for the Lower Swetar five thirty seven plan?
So move.
Thank you, Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
Joe Robinson. Chris or Joe?
Chris or Joe, doesn't matter.
Joe's fine.
Joe's, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? She carries, thank you. Intergovernmental reviews.
Okay, uh we can take these all three at once, there's a, that's uh above and beyond, it's out, out of the the norm, uh Capital Region Water Pennvest is seeking a hundred and twenty million dollars for ten different uh sewage treatment plants, uh improvements and other uh uh improvements to their system, uh not only uh doing uh things at the at the treatment plant, but also uh taking uh the Spring Creek Interceptor and Spring Slate Creek Pumping Station replacement, and also the Paxton Creek Interception, Interceptor Rehab Project, so again, they something like that is anytime fixing facilities with the, within our our uh our goals to have the project completed. Uh the next one is the the Tannus Run, Millersburg Borough is seeking uh money from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to take care of all those projects that we've talked about. Uh of course, uh we're in favor of that. And the last one is again, city of uh, it was the Capital Region Water is doing another project, uh they're looking for Department of Community and Economic Development local share to green infrastructure along Riverfront Park, these are all part of the things that they've been doing on the park and all that area to handle their stormwater uh outflows into the Suspan River, so again, it's a facility improvement. Certainly in favor of that.
Okay, you have a motion to accept the the three intergovernmental reviews. So move.
Brian Palmeroy will second.
And Brian with a second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any names? Hearing none, motion carries. Little items. Future uh future meetings.
I can take that one. We're slowly getting there. Uh the the conference room construction is built. We're waiting on some of the IT stuff. Hopefully by December, but definitely by June.
Okay.
So stay tuned.
Also in the packet was the twenty twenty six uh meeting dates.
Yes, um this will need to take action on because we have to have our me- meeting dates advertised. Um so there are two or three. Questionable items that we want to talk about, how you wanna possibly handle it. Uh we have our meetings on the first Monday of the month. However, on April sixth is the Easter Monday, with Easter being April fifth. Even though Easter is not recognized, the political holiday, if that's a concern, we can certainly. The other date is July fourth is on a Saturday. And that and if. That may be over the holiday weekend, so uh July sixth is the following Monday. So again, the question is. It doesn't technically interfere with it as it does September fourteenth with the so. Or day or Labor Day, uh pushing it back a week, but uh these are two dates that. Do you want, do you wanna have it modified in any way because?
Haven't we historically changed those dates, made them a week later?
We haven't, haven't. Done it both ways.
I don't think um businesses um even let off for even Good Friday. Anymore, more and more businesses are getting away from that.
Correct. We we are working on Good Friday as well.
Right. Are you off Monday because you're working Good Friday?
No.
No.
We're it's it's just a.
I think it's smart for the members of the committee to make sure you guys are, you know, don't have plans and everything.
They're good for me.
Okay.
About the July one.
What about the July one?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't even find people wanting to take long holidays or anything, so I don't know how others look at that.
I would suggest moving the fourth of July one week. I would think that would be a. To the thirteenth.
I'd be good with that.
All right, so uh so we will amend that to July thirteenth. That'll be the second Monday. All right, so then uh. What I'd like to do is again, take a vote, the schedule will be. Uh January fifth, February second, March second, April sixth, which is not changed. May fourth, June first, July thirteenth, August third. September fourteenth, which would be a second Monday because of the holiday. October fifth, November second, December seventh.
Don't move.
That looks good for me.
Mm hmm.
We have a motion from Gary to accept those dates, so I have a second.
Second. Yeah, Joe Robinson.
Yep, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any names? Hearing none, those are the dates.
Be there, be fair.
That's it. Uh the Tri-County membership, uh appointment of members uh. From the Dolphin County, Berry County. What do we need to do?
Okay, in the packet, I have a gave the uh the listing of the membership. Uh and then also highlighted the ones who are Tri-County members. There's four of them, Mr. Mr. Kirchner, Mr. Lenker and Ms. Gasky. Uh the uh the planning commission is. Points four members to serve on the Tri-County Board, which is a two-year. The also, if you notice, all the people who uh currently are there. Uh and then when their terms are expiring. Um the only one who next year from our planning commission who's not going, who has a term expiring is Miss Morgan. So uh so that's, you know, if you're taking into consideration any of that, so. So uh as a committee, we want to recommend who to serve. Certainly. Happy to make that. Point or notification to Tri-County.
Yeah, I'll move that the approved before uh re- reappoint before they were listed.
Yeah. I'll second that, Brian Palmeroy.
Well, I guess, do we, do we have, cause all four of you are on here. Do we have concurrence that you guys are all interested?
Gonna ask that question. Is there anyone not interested in staying with the Tri-County planning?
I'm happy to continue serving unless there's um some of our newer board members that want to um. Step outside of Dolphin and and serve.
Kirchner's fine with staying on.
Oh, what was that?
Yeah, John was okay with staying.
Okay.
Oh, okay, thanks, John.
I hope I said that right, Drake John.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so everyone that's uh I'm glad to like to stay on that also. So uh we had a motion from Gary to the for the four people that are presently on there to stay on there. Uh do I have a second?
Brian Palmeroy seconded.
Yep, I seconded.
Okay. Brian second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any names? Hearing none, motion carries.
Yep.
Standards, yes, standards run update.
Yes, uh you know, there's the grant application that was, we noted a little bit earlier here. Uh also too, we reached out to uh. To uh Jay, the manager at Millersburg, and got a little report here and I'll just read it, uh and maybe. Chris, we'll talk a little bit about as well. He said, the only update I have is we still do not have a contractor willing to touch the emergency evacuation. Senator Rothman's office is giving me Jay in touch with Pennvest to look at additional funding sources outside of the state LSA. Uh and then he was going to action to see how the rain impacted the uh five forty four State Street. See if there was any action that we had not heard anything uh to that effect. Uh Chris, I don't know if you want, you you have any additional or have anything you wanna add?
Well, um our original contractor did did pull out um when kind of the rubber hit the road and the timing was. Uh there to to be able to proceed. We did get an extension, I think, on the permits. I don't remember exactly if it was thirty or sixty days, but there's a little time left to find a contractor. Um but I can say that um whatever. Uh the the cost will be for that is going to increase most likely from from what it was from the. The original contractor we had, cause he's typically the the lowest uh in the area. Um so there'll be a a bit of a a challenge there potentially. Um if we do find a a new contractor to do it, so. Um evolving um as time goes on and um none of these things are ever simple. So um we're continuing to uh to work our way forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh Dolphin County Cop Plan.
Uh yes, uh kind of give you a quick. Uh uh there was a uh in the last link, uh I included what we have put together in terms of a scope. Work that we put together for our grant application. Uh if you wanna take a look at that and give back to me if you have any comments or questions or such, do you want to to go over? Uh we do have a a gaming grant application in, and we do also have a state planning grant application in. Our projected budget, those two grants is a hundred fifty thousand dollars total, taking eighteen months to do it. Uh if we do not get funding, uh we will still move forward, of course, because we have to have it done within the timeframe. It's just that it's it's gonna be playing some. Usable chairs with budgets on LPA stuff and things like that, but uh and maybe some of this scoping stuff will have to be. Modified in some shape or form, but this is what we're looking to do. The main thing to kind of talk to you about or kind of just let you know, uh the public participation stuff is going to be.
I don't hear anything. Is it just me?
What's that? Can you can you hear us now, Joe? Okay.
Let me turn my, is it my speaker? I don't hear anything.
We hear you, Joe.
Yeah.
How about now, Joe?
I would say just keep calling.
So anyway, uh the first few months are gonna be putting together a public outreach. What we're looking to do is to have a survey out. We're gonna have a couple of workshops and also the formation of a. An overall advisory committee or a focus uh kind of overseer group. We're still working on who that might be, if there's anybody other than the General Planning Commission members wanna serve. In an advanced capacity, you know, to all those things. Of course, this is your plan, you're the planning commission, so any of these things you'll be invited to. Uh but if there's anything above and beyond you want to take part in this outreach uh type of things, just let us know. So anytime there's gonna be something, you will be notified, you will be automatically part of this advisory group. It's whether you wanna uh show up and do any of that stuff as well, but but uh that's, we're putting that together, the survey is putting together. One of the focuses of it is of course to be uh. Similar to what we've done in the past in terms of meeting the MPC requirements, but also one of the things in. As a focus is to make sure that our plans with the regional plan are all the same. And so uh the idea is uh, you know, talking to uh. Making sure Perry's plan and Cumberland Plan and the Regional Growth Plan and the tra- transportation improvement plan. Everything else is meets in terms of land use and. Overall uh goals, because it's no sense to have everything working against each other, so. That's one of the main focuses that we're going to be going underneath as we kind of do that.
No, like I, Jerry, I too, you know, I think we see our two regional plans as kind of the. Cop plan of the cop plans, whether it's the regional infrastructure plan or the regional transportation plan, and then those filter down to the. County cop plans, which then hopefully filter down to the municipal cop plans and ultimately to the. Local local land use policy, so. We we wanna make sure that kind of foundation and that structure is is kind of strong and 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 apparent in these plans as we can.
So if you have chances, have a chance, you wanna look at that scope. If you have any heartburn. Let me know. It's in the packet, if if it's in the packet, it's on last night.
So there's a link to it, the actual scope is not, and we could, we could follow up with the PDF after the.
Yeah, if anybody wants to go. Okay.
Okay. Gary, did you wanna talk a little bit about that email you sent out? Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. I did share with the. Commission members a piece of legislation, actually major legislation that the. United States Senate uh in a bipartisan fashion passed a number of weeks ago, the. The legislation is called the Road to Housing Act, and it really is to. Address the housing crisis in this country. Uh something that, you know, this commission has talked about off and on. Housing affordability, housing attainability. At our Tri-County Regional Planning Commission luncheon this year, we had the governor's office talk about that, so. Uh one of the key points on this legislation is. Addressing key concerns around zoning and land use policies, and it just made me think. I know that the last three years or so, we have had some. Periodic involvement presentation with groups on this topic, and I just didn't know if anything was planned. For two thousand twenty six. Uh it it certainly uh. Reinforces uh what is happening and the and the land use and land and zoning i- i- is a key part of that.
Sure, I mean, I I think, and I'll speak to certainly the the regional plan, the regional growth management plan. We're we're pick, just picked it off, we have a survey out right now. That's going to be a very kind of analytical and technical document that looks at kind of growth, you know, we have projected growth. What could that growth look like? What do we want that growth to look like? What are the impacts of if it looks? This way versus this way. That will then feed down into, and and that will, the the regional information plan will also have. Uh like it normally does, some good, very broad, but good policy recommendations, always dealing with. Encouraging generally increasing increasing density, more efficient land use patterns. Uh better mix of of housing types, all all of these kinds of big overarching things you see in the housing affordability. Stuff and making sure that, you know, the rubber meets the road at those local. At those local zoning ordinances. And and I think we see certainly that the regional plan and as it filters down into the Dolphin County Cop Plan. Almost in an in advocacy role. Trying to work with municipalities to make them understand. You know, why why these types of housing solutions are ultimately beneficial to their community in the long run and to the regions. So Jerry, you have anything for?
No, that's that's, you know, that's kind of it. I don't think we have anything planned, especially knocking them out, uh some of those things and kind of working. You know, presenting zoning modifications or uh workshops or anything like that, but I think. One of the things that's gonna come out whenever we do our outreach is talking about housing. It's certainly gotta making sure that 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 goal, uh you know, I I. Pretty positive, using good planning practices is what I wanna do in terms of our. Our our comprehensive plan, and that's certainly one of the things, we certainly have to adjust certain things based on what people tell us. Goals of everybody is, but I'm sure that's gonna be a strong. And again, it's, you know, we can take these, we can breathe these horses to the water.
Oh, I I understand that.
And and I think that, that, you know, the LPA program then is really, I think, where we. Most directly work with municipalities on whether they're. Whether it's on a development by development, land development basis, or whether they're looking at their ordinances, you know, we have a variety of work of. Of a lot of municipalities, a lot of them are in various stages of that process or engaging. So they're on with, so it's it's our kind of continued work, I think, with them.
And you know, and I think if there if there becomes some things that are out there plan wise and search. Certainly they get developed and everything else, we have a different scrutiny. On those plans, whenever we review it, there's a checkbox, are you in compliance with our regional plan, you're in compliance with our. Comprehensive plan, and if it doesn't, if it's like one and a half acre lots on uh on something, systems or whatever. Match up to what we say is the info and everything, then we'll we'll note that, and then whenever they ask for funds. We'll note that as well, but yeah, maybe this doesn't. You know, really, that's that's about the biggest hammers that we have in terms of trying to get them to.
Yeah, I think those of us that have been practitioners in the industry for many, many years, you know, you see municipalities. Upper Paxton Township is fifteen thousand square foot for a lot with water sewer. And when you look here, uh uh John Kirchner and I talked about this, Lower Paxton Township, look at Locust Lane to twenty two. Look at those neighborhoods, those homes were built on sixty foot frontage lots. You know, I mean. It it just that type of promoting. Uh it is the only way we're gonna help get out of the crisis. One of the things is legislation. uh, it is the only way we're gonna help get out of the crisis. One of the things this legislation does, which I think is interesting, for those cities and municipalities that promote uh trying to to ease land use policies, they will provide them increased CBPG funding. So there's like a carrot that's.
Well, and maybe we have a lead there and and we'd love to.
Yeah.
Work with you and then try to, you know, both understand and help us get out to municipalities. If there is some training or outreach opportunities, you know, we're having we're having, uh, on Thursday, we have our our regional active transportation summit where we have sixty people coming from a variety of municipalities all over the region. And bunch of different people to get together and talk about that. I could foresee at some point having some sort of regional housing summit where we have
That, that would be.
Or we could have possibly a a collection of kind of, we have, we have, I think, six different speakers at this active transportation summit. I'm kind of kicking it off, but then we've penned out PCNRs to municipal folks to come in and try to give a variety of perspectives aimed specifically at municipalities to try to make make sure they understand both why we think this is a good thing and then the tools they have at their disposal to do those things. So I could foresee something, whether it's I've, I don't know, you know, whether it's during cop plan development or maybe after as an implementation tool. But starting to do those types of events and and you know, I, I, I'm shocked at the, at the turnout we're getting for this active transportation summit. So I think there'll be more of these, it's, it's gonna be.
Well, and I think also to, you know, we're not sure what the funding bottleneck will break.
Yeah.
But if there's money out there for people to start doing some stuff and there's tie-ins to it, I think that always gets people to the, to the interest of what.
Yeah, you drink in the water.
Give something fun.
Yeah, so let's, let's make it cook, let's make it something a little tastier. Let's make it Perrier or something like that.
Yes.
But uh, but yeah, and I think also too, going back to the PPA conference, there were a number of local planners there. And as Andrew said, that was there was a large number of discussions on for housing, maybe Leah, of course, being, she was the the chair of the whole conference, you know, her role in housing. One of the sessions, uh, the main sessions was uh the person we had was at there, plus a person from Philadelphia and one of the Home and Home Alliance, uh.
Is that Representative Solomon, Gerald Solomon?
No, it was a person from the city of Philadelphia.
I forgot, who was that with?
Yeah, it was supposed to be the woman who's like uh the head of it, but she wasn't able to make it, so he was a throwaway type of thing, but he did a good job anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, and uh, so I mean, that was like one of the featured speaker speeches, so it was so, you know, and there was local people from our area who were at these conferences and I hope that the you know, that they got to hear some of the stuff too. It's just not us beating down saying you need to do this. I mean, they're all seeing it. Everybody knows it's a crisis, what we have to do and it's just a matter of getting, when the NIMBYs show up, that's when everything's getting big problems.
Well, everybody knows it, but they still practice what they have. I mean, because it's not just the upper end, Gary, look at the Hanovers. It's the same way.
Yeah.
Look at the houses that are going up there.
Oh, yeah.
The large land plots, yeah.
I have to ask you, Mary, where are them hundred people going that la- that 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 are losing their formal home park or whatever?
Well, they'll find something, I guess.
Homes, a hundred people.
Because, because it's you know, and 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 it's a sha- it's a shame because that's truly affordable housing. And up there, you know, um, they have just as many challenges as you hear with the um, you know, going to the PBA meetings. You know, everybody wants to build the high-end housing and and the people that work the areas up there, up there in the Pocono area, you know, they have nowhere to go. Because there's just no entry level housing that's go- that's going in. And even up there, they fight trying to put in or expand communities, manufactured housing communities, so. Yeah, unfortunately, um, while the the data center people are gonna have to buy them out of their homes, because we do have laws in place that they'll get at least twenty-five hundred or whatever the market value of the home is. Uh, but at minimum, they'll get twenty-five hundred to go and hopefully find apartments or um homes in other communities. But, you know, they're, they're not easy to find either. So.
Just sharing it with the group that, you know, this, this subject isn't going away.
Yeah.
And our involvement and leadership and whatever capacity I, I hear you, Alan.
Yes, a lot of good information.
This is important, thanks.
Yeah.
Keep beating the drum.
Okay. If there's.
Or drag it to the water.
If there's no. If there's nothing else, it's uh need a motion for adjournment.
So move.
I'm Mary.
Second. Nope.
Second by Chris.
Yep.
You adjourned, thank you.
All right, just uh keep your eyes open for what's gonna be.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone. Turkey Day.
Yeah, thank you.
Same to you.
Bye bye now.